We will now call the meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
We will now call the meeting to order. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion's been made and seconded?
Mr. Mayor, under wastewater regionalization project, the number fifteen million four hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars and one cent, that should be changed to one million sixty-four thousand four hundred seventy. That was an oversight.
Yeah. I can elaborate. It's the number that went into the minutes is actually the rest that's remaining to be paid. What we actually paid was the one point oh six. So that's, we just wanted to clarify that to make sure that minutes were corrected.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will now get a report on the wastewater regionalization project. Jared Vogel from Bolton Mink will give the little talk.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Council. The item in your packet this evening is pay estimate number two for the regionalization project. That full pay estimate amount is two million five hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents. Now, we did have our week, our bi-weekly construction meeting today. Everything continues to progress well. There's, there's on the course being around twenty-three of them through most of the season, and making good progress there. So in terms of the total amount of horse man saw, we're currently sitting around that sixty feet of the total tight length is what we're having down so far. So, good progress since they've started. They have poured the main lift station base slab and base walls. So that, that process continues to move. And then they also have excavated the Gulf lift station excavation. So they consider building that lift station. They're working on the access road. So there's activity in multiple places. They did indicate that the directional drilling crew will be in next week. And then in addition, they're looking at within a couple weeks of buying certain other pipe crew on site. So things will continue to move relatively quickly, and that's good for progress. So we are recommending approval of pay estimate number two as included in your package. And I'd be happy to answer any questions there, if I'm remembered.
You gonna have any issues once frost or winter rolls on, rolls in?
Yeah, we anticipate that there will be some, some building construction, but in the dead of winter, they won't be quite that.
So how many months, if we're seventeen months out from connection, and we lose five, then what, we're twelve months of work?
Yeah, so their completion date is November twenty-two.
Okay.
Have they made all the underground connections along there as far as under the various county roads?
No, the directional driller that's coming in next week, you're gonna start making those connections. Because we're drilling, drilling under those rather than opening cutting them, so that we don't disturb the shells.
And how about the river there? You gonna make that before this fall, going under that?
Yep, yep. So they're looking at doing the Elker River and the Indian River.
Okay.
Their goal is to be out of twenty-three. I think originally they said around last part of August, but in my role in September. Their goal is to be done with that twenty-three corridor.
Anybody else have anything for Jared? I make the motion.
Yeah, before we, before we go any further, on the lift station out here, where are they at on that?
At the main lift?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have the base slab for it and the base walls for it. So then they need to keep bringing those walls up there. The pipe that needs to be stepped out of there for gravity severs. So they'll be doing that here. They're anticipating this late summer, fall sometime. But they'll continue to work on those lift stations also. So I think there's some I'd like to...
So no the piping spun down there at all?
No, no, this country where...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think you guys have done an awesome job for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the pay application request number two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jared. We will now move on to the open forum.
Oh. Hold on. We should have a resolution for the loan.
Twenty-twenty-two. Oh.
Yep. The updated agenda has the full name on there. Can I take that?
Yep.
Okay. So the resolution that's presented in your packet, this is coming from bond counsel. We were able to pull the lock on the rate, which was great news, right before they increased them again. So we locked in at two point five percent. I provided that amortization schedule to you. What this resolution does is this authorizes us to move forward with the issuance of the debt. And then what will happen is we will then have the authority, as the mayor and myself, to sign the final loan agreement. Once we authorize the debt, it has to go back to the commissioner, the state commissioner for sign off. And that basically then gives us the authority to finalize the loan, and then we have access to those proceeds. We still have the eight million in direct appropriation that will also be accessed, and that will be also run through the same authority. So public facility authorities will administer all our funds. Funds that are eligible for the direct appropriation will be expensed. If it's not eligible, it will go to the loan at that point. So we don't draw on the loan until we have to. We really utilize those grant funds. And then if the P S I comes through, we would utilize that when it becomes available. So it basically sets us up for full funding so that we can cover the contractual obligations that we have with this approval, hoping to close in two weeks following this approval tonight. So if there's any questions they can answer, let me know.
No questions. Do we have?
Make motion, we adopt resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just clarify that, did everyone vote in favor of this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to open forum. With this is if somebody has something, a concern or a question or something, we ask that they come up to the podium, give their name and address and what their concern or problem is. And we ask that they keep it to a two to three minute talk.
Ken Anderson, November twenty-eighth, Kestrel in Foley. We're out, we're all these parts of stuff that's going on. Fifteen, fifteen minutes to hit there actually. Last week, we got a letter from the Foley Police Department saying they were in violation. And then we had to have it cleared up before August eighth, otherwise we were facing a fine. And of course, we were a little alarmed because whatever he was violating, he has been violating for a long time. And I'm not sure it was violation anyway, but anyway, you're lucky my wife isn't here because she's, she's at Gulf tonight. We haven't bloody married. But she's, she's a little more stronger about this than I am. And I am concerned about, you know, is there a fine? What's the fine going to be? And then as we did, a number of colleagues, she did, she called the mayor, she called Roseley, and I gave her response, and you were out at our house looking at it. And she also talked to the police chief, and I don't know, Kate, you're pretty aware of it, but you were aware of this thing. Okay. Well, I'm concerned about that. And then I'm a little concerned the fact that I apparently was falsely accused because I said that I have a complaint of the dual axle trailer camper on my property, which I don't. It's on my neighbor's property and it's his property. So it shouldn't have been a problem. But they talked to me, you think about dual axle trailers. I have three board trailers. I have an area that I cleaned out behind my pole barn. You know, there's trees in there. I've had people come in, go clean it out a little bit. This is on my property. And they put the trailers back there after we put the boats in the water. You know, it's not two boats, a speed boat and a jet ski. And they're there for maybe five months. It depends how long is the season in Minnesota. So they're there five months. And then they're all gone. One, the one trailer goes in my pole barn. The others would go to wherever we parked the boats. So I'm not exactly sure. I was a little bit amazed also at the extent of this letter that I got. I think it could have been a lot shorter. In fact, I wonder how many were sent out? Does anybody know the answer? How many of those were sent out?
I will say that in my...
Okay. And it looked like it cost a lot of money. I guess I was looking to ask that question also. That's my concern right now. I'd like to have an answer. I know that Gary even on, so forth. I'd like to hear where, where it stands, where everything stands. Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Deborah Wilson at six hundred Dewey Street. In addition to the parking ordinance, I've had people that have come up to me and saying they're receiving conflicting information. So they'll call up the city and specifically in regards to parking pad, and then they'll be told, call the county. And so then they get directed back to the city. So there's no real direction. And so the questions are, if it needs to be an exact measurement, because like, you know, our other resident of city, they park there since they own the place for twenty years. And so they're trying to be in compliance, but yet then there is no direction as to for the parking pad for a truck. What size, what depth, does there need to be an underlayment underneath? And so all it says is just free rock. And so it needs to be a little bit clear cut guidelines as to the what, where, what for on your parking pad. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a concern or a problem they'd like to let us know about? Okay, we'll move on to department reports. Police Department, Katie McMillan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you received a staff report from the month of July, five hundred and thirty-four. Even if you subtract all of the sixty-five warrants and our seventy-seven T C D stops, we still have three hundred and eighty-eight. And that's the highest we've had this year. Out of those one hundred and thirty-four regular traffic stops, not including the T C D stops, eighty-six of those are traffic stops from Broadway Avenue and Highway twenty-three all the way to Highway sixty-six. So we are enforcing the detour section. And so you can see that speed enforcement is up. Domestics and assaults were up from other months. And arrest warrants, Bette County is taking their misdemeanor warrants again, so we are getting those. And then agency assists went up again due to shortage of staff and helping the county out after their request on calls. That is up to that. Starting, who starts September sixth? And the math added, it's a bad part. Any questions on the staff report?
Yeah, on the city ordinance, are those citations? Are they enforcements?
Nope, those sixty-five there are the letters that were sent out for either the parking, tall grass, regular nuisance, or junk in the yard. The parking is the only citations that we can issue, is the parking tickets, and that's for four. And going into, going into that further, it says sixty-five. Each of those are regular, your tall grass, your nuisance complaint. Fifty-seven parking ordinance letters went out for the parking ordinance that council approved and passed and requested to reinforce last month. So that is that. So you have, I mean, we're getting, I'm out there enforcing that ordinance to reflect back on Mr. Anderson's comments. For the camper, there's, we don't know where the property lines are. It was next to the full shed. We took a shot in the dark. We did, he didn't inform us that it's neighbors. So the next go around, the neighbor will be getting a letter. And the trailer, it's dual axle trailer. And I was just going off the ordinance that you guys passed, dual axle, they got a letter.
Can I ask for one question?
That would be for the, now it's... That was for the public one.
Okay. I think who's got a question about what dual axle trailer would be?
Dual axle is when there's two axes. So like four tires on the trailer.
I know, but it's a, it's a, a trailer that's two axle and camper.
But the ordinance states dual axle trailer.
Yep. You can read the ordinance.
And the front office was so kind to help us send out those letters, and they also included, why they are so thick is they also included a copy of the ordinance with the letter so people can refer to it right away. So instead of going out online and trying to find it online, they had everything right in front of them.
Well, as you know, that's part of the ordinance I don't agree with. I talked to the administrator. Common sense and compassion does not enter into the ordinance. So I guess you gotta do what you gotta do. But I want everybody to know that I'm totally against it. Amen.
And I understand that council members want them, but even though if you're against it, you still have to support the ordinance that was passed.
You do, I don't, yes.
Well, if the people come to you, council members want them. It makes my job a lot different, difficult when I have people saying that council members are telling them completely different.
I did not, there was a misquote here that might have been stated to me that I told them they did not have to comply. I did not state that ever. I said, I bring this to the council. I have some explanation and figure this out. But I'd never told anybody they didn't have to comply. I know they're gonna have to, but that doesn't mean I have to be for it.
Is there any questions about the parking ordinance?
Nope, we can move on.
The next thing is edible cannabis products. I don't know how much you are aware, but the state has now passed that it's edible, or legal for places to sell edible THC cannabis products. I don't know, it's up to the council if they want to do a moratorium. Some cities have done so. And that would just stop or freeze the sale of these items that if there are any places in town that are selling them for the meantime. But during a moratorium, you have to be actively doing a study and trying to work towards finding the end result, which you, I gave you our staff report. I personally don't have the staffing to do it. And it does, I mean, you actively have to be studying it and trying to come up with a resolution of how you're going to, or even if you can regulate it. There's a lot of unknowns with this. The legislature passed it. And but here it is, there is, they, we're not sure if cities can ban it or if we can even attach it to our tobacco license as anything. And so there's a lot of unknowns that they do.
Okay. Well...
Sarah?
Chief and I have spent a lot of time talking about this, trying to figure out what would be, you know, the best course of action. I actually asked a bunch of cities down at the conference last week too, and it's kind of all over the place because the problem is, is there was not a lot of guidance provided. And there are things that they're actually gonna have to go back to legislature on to get clarification on. So even though we were, if we did a moratorium and we're actively studying it, there are things that we can't make a decision on at this point because we just don't have that information from the state of Minnesota. It was literally thrown in with minutes to go at the end of the session. And that is why there are so many unknowns with this, with this legalization. So it's being brought to you because we feel we have an obligation to bring it to you with what you feel is the best course of action. But just know, we, we don't have all the answers.
So this can be tabled until whenever?
Yeah, some cities are just watching it to see how it goes. Some cities are doing the moratorium. It, it's kind of just depending on how you wanna, how you wanna do it. One city I talked to, and actually Katie got a sample too from, was Wilmer. And they passed some ordinance that kind of froze it, but they're actually imposing licensing regulations. So they're going that route because they don't believe they can ban it. And they don't know that it's in their best interest to, to go that far down the road with that. So it's all over the place.
There's no clear direction yet from the legisl, legislature. There's no clear direction from the legislature yet.
Yeah, that I know.
So I think we have to put a moratorium on it.
It's pretty hard, pretty hard to make a legal decision until they...
Well, but I'm...
Well, why would you put a moratorium on it? I mean, I can go online and have it in my doorstep two days from now. What's the difference if they're buying it from anyone that's willing to sell it out here in the community?
You're doing that online though.
What's that?
You're doing that online.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still in the city then, isn't it then?
It's not a business though. I mean...
I say it's a, it's a, if someone is a small business and wants to take a chance on it, then let them do it. Why are we gonna shut somebody down that has a chance to sell something?
I don't think we're shutting anything down.
If you put a moratorium on it, you're gonna shut them down. They can't sell it then.
How do we know we're not legally, how do we know that we're not legally doing this right? I mean, I think there should be license, just like alcohol, just like tobacco. It should be licensed somehow.
Well, until the legislature gets their foot right, we shouldn't do anything on it. They passed it through.
Yeah.
We don't tell them to order on their estate.
I'm not in favor of the city spending a whole bunch of money on a study when the legislature's obviously gonna do something sooner or later. Is there recommendation from the system?
We, I guess that we have spent a lot of time discussing it, and we feel like one option has this problem, the other option has the other problem. I mean, we're, we are kind of, we, we can't say for certain that we have a good suggestion for you. That's the honest. I mean, we're, we're struggling to.
Okay, if, if we just let it go for now, can we still put a moratorium on it, say, next month of the month? If, if we see that we're having some trouble with it?
Yeah, and we could also to implement some licensing regulation when there's some clarification that comes through. There's still some options. A lot of cities are struggling. They just, I think they're concerned it may become an issue. And so they're trying to put that freeze on now just to give them some time and kind of delay. But you have to actively study it. That's state law. So every time we do a moratorium, when we, we are studying, and I compile a file of all the different things that we're doing because we have that obligation to provide that to somebody if they wanted to request, what did we do? Because we basically limited somebody from doing something. So we have to have a justification why.
Can we license it? Make, make the people have a license?
I did ask our attorney, and, you know, they think that's where it could likely end up, is there maybe some more clarification? And then the city's role or the local government's role will be to implement some type of licensing requirements. So they have to go through maybe a similar process such as alcohol or tobacco does. And we have certain, you know, rules they have to follow to try to protect, you know, certain type of sale or, you know, making sure that the youth and so forth are considered.
Yeah, 'cause I can see it could cause some trouble because you're gonna, the kids will get a hold of it.
But even there are issues in the statute that, with the youth sales that, that are limiting what they can do because they didn't write the law as complete as they probably hoped it would be written.
Well, I'm sure the legislature's gonna realize they didn't do a good job of, they passed it, but they didn't specify what you can, can't do and everything.
Yeah. The good news is our attorney, Ashley, is actually in the working group with the state, like, to try to figure this out. So as she gets more information, she will fill us, fill us in on that. So having that resource will hopefully get us access to some of the information of what they're discussing about sooner. And then we can come back with more information if that's helpful.
I was gonna say, I think we should just stay on it right now the way it is and wait, see if we get, get some more information. If we have, start having trouble, then we will put a moratorium and we will license everything. But I think for now, we'll just see what kind of information they can cut, what the attorneys and everything can come up with so we can give it a, a fair ride.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you're all aware, I know some cities are doing it, like Saguaro's and stuff are not at this time. That is all I have.
Anybody have any more questions for Katie?
Or quickly, the answer one, several some, um, questions about the parking ordinance, are legal to look, it has to be the whole length and width that's underneath the parking.
A part of it is the jail.
I just, the length and width is all that's needed to be, I just.
I just say one other thing, um, you were talking about, you just think four trailers were included in that.
We, one thing about these meetings, I do not want people just talking. We, we, we can't disrupt the meeting like that.
But I'm sorry, I'm there.
No, no, we don't.
Do you have any other questions that I need to?
You, you should have done it, when we have open forum, that's when you do it. That is the time to do it. I do not want the meeting continually interrupted by people in the audience. That's why we have the open forum forum. We'll now move on to city engineer Jared Griffin.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm from the city council. Um, tonight, I just have a quick update on the Highway twenty-three project. Last week, we finished the sanitary sewer connection from about eight to nine, getting that crossing of twenty-three at nine. Um, and now the subcontractor is moving on from the sanitary sewer and is starting the Highway twenty-three storm sewer. So as far as the next city items that will be addressed, um, the current schedule right now is fifteenth. Um, they will be starting the sanitary water work at the intersection of, at, at Broadway. Um, so that roughly a week timeframe, that Broadway intersection will be completely closed. The detour will be shifted over to four. And then ran, I guess ran south to connect to the, the current detour that, that is in place right now. And then in your packets is the, the change order number one that was agreed and approved by Minda. Uh, we discussed this change order, uh, the last few council, uh, meetings. This was basically their reduction of all the work east of, east of, uh, night, limiting their, limiting the removal of the, of the lift station and the gravity system that tech for. Um, the total net change amount for this change order was minus five hundred ninety-three thousand and ninety-four dollars and one cent. Um, that is all I've had this evening, uh, if there's any questions you may have, um, please answer us.
What's the timeframe on closing down, uh, Broadway?
Broadway?
And twenty-three intersection?
Uh, anywhere from five to eight dates, probably, eight on the, it's on a, they're not anticipating, yeah. They were, they're right now planning on a week, so.
So in completion of that, the detour be changed back to Broadway versus Fourth Avenue, alright?
Jared, are there any issues with supplies for the project, lighting or anything like that yet?
I haven't heard anything on lighting, um, I know they are concerned about the box cover, especially the one, um, in between board and thirteen. Uh, that one, as far as we are hearing, is scheduled to, oh, I didn't want to say this, is estimated to schedule in October. Um, but they haven't got a confirmation on that yet, so they are.
Crossing their fingers?
Yeah, they are, there's a potential that that could get pushed to the spring. At, uh, portion of.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jared? We'll now move on to public works and fire, Mark Patton Foose.
Busy. Second of all, we're up to about nine hundred dollars this month with metering and all that, so we're moving from a short one too, so we'll have a busy month again. Other than that, I don't have any. Getting beat up by people on the parking ordinance on half your evidence. Spending a lot of time on that, getting stopped in the road.
Does anybody have any questions for him? We'll move on to administration with Sarah Braun.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, the first thing, um, this was an ad I got today, um, you have a copy of liability coverage, we do this every year. When we have to renew our insurance, we need you to motion to not waive the statutory tort limits on the insurance. So the state statute provides you protection in how much a person can sue a city for. So by, um, this is on your desk, you got a sheet on your table spot. By accepting that, we don't, we don't wanna waive that, we are just telling our insurance agent to renew that same coverage with the state, state statute protection, so I'll need a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, second item I wanted to bring, uh, to your attention, and then I do have a property owner here too, is the, uh, CUP permit that we have been working on the last couple meetings. Did you all have a chance to go by and take a look at that? Um, the property owner is here, if you have any, you know, concerns, questions, um, a couple of things, I do have a copy of the CUP if anyone's interested. Um, but things I just wanted to put in the record is, um, it does require, um, that he display no more than, uh, three units in the front of the house that are for sale at a time. Um, he's not allowed to store any units or construction materials along the west property line. Um, and then we do need the hard surfacing of the rest of that driveway to the shed completed. So those are the items that I have based on the original CUP approval, but if there's anything that the council would like to add now would be the time so that we can make sure that this property owner has the information they need.
It's like the progress I've seen so far, good job.
So once you hard surface that, is he allowed to display back to the building then?
He can only have three in the front, um, and he, yeah, um, it just says applicant is not allowed to display any units or store construction materials along the west property line. I know when the planning commission discussed it, it was about storing things in the front by the trees. I don't think we necessarily had a concern if it's kind of tucked in the back closer to the shed, it's just they wanted to keep the clutter away from what was visible from the highway, does that sound correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't want you coming back if you got something built and set it out to be picked up, and then all of a sudden now you got forward six items.
Which was actually moved there today, I had two of them on the west side.
No, I just wanna make sure that we're working with you on this, not.
And I, I do appreciate that, sorry.
If anybody. Now, does, does anybody have any other questions or concerns for her?
Uh, the truck in front, Dan, oh, we have an ordinance on vehicles have to be licensed?
Yep, yep, we mentioned that the last time, and that's something I'm, I'm trying to get a collector plate for it.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's the avenue, I'll make sure that one says, it's parked about where it's going to be now, and, you know, some flowers are coming, that sort of thing.
Uh, and I think it would, just to make sure too, if it wasn't clear last meeting, there is a, a greenhouse that would not be considered one of the units of display in the front property as well. So if it kind of looks like four, it's actually one of them's their personal greenhouse, or I think it's a greenhouse storage shed.
I sold the gunner today, actually.
Oh, okay.
She cried, but she's getting one of them.
Here I thought it was a she shed. Well, it looks good to me, Dan, thanks.
I, I appreciate your patience and, and, uh, you know, I've been, we've been working very, you're all invited anytime, please stop over, take a look at the interior of the building, it really did turn out nice. And, uh, and we can chat anytime, thank you, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
Oh, one more thing, Dan, one, uh, hard surfacing, what's, uh, scheduled on that?
I would guess that, I'm hoping that I can get in next year and get, uh, hard service right away. That, that's, it would make that look so much nicer, and, um, that's, that's my hope.
And that falls in with the CUP?
That's up to you, yeah, I mean, there, there's been a lot of work and stuff, I know you do a bunch of grading work and stuff that he just did this year, so that's up to you guys, if, that's doable.
For this situation, he's got there and whatever, it should be prepped and probably set for a year anyway.
Yeah.
Hello.
Right, yeah, so, right, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have on that item, and then my last item is just the budget. Um, we will hopefully have something to you, uh, beginning of next week, I will drop off the packets. Um, working on a couple of different things with budget. Uh, the one thing, um, we got a little bit of uptick in LGA, but not much. Um, but working on, you know, we're still have a couple of insurance variables and those type of things. Um, we'll do the best we can, you know, to give you the best estimates, but some of those numbers don't come till a little later. Uh, one thing I do wanna, um, make known to you is, I was not aware of the fact that there was some discussion on levy limits at the legislature at the end. Nothing ended up coming through, but, um, something that I just wanna draw your attention to, um, to keep an eye out for. That is something that if it, if there is some discussions, and I think the concern is rising property values, um, we need to keep an eye on that because that will affect what we can and cannot do as far as budget. So just something to keep in mind. Any questions on that? And our workshop is the sixteenth. We'll have a day completely designated to that purpose.
What time?
Five thirty.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions for her? We'll move on to old business and update on the pool refund policy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council, we had requested, uh, to go back, I think I put in my memo, I hope you guys read, we did, um, the one request, we did go back, talked to the pool manager, the pool manager did make contact with the individual. Uh, reschedule is not an option, um, from what was relayed to me, so it's, I guess, back to you on how you wish to proceed. Um, and then I also had another request for a refund that is in front of you tonight, um, for an individual that actually signed up instead of a preschool level two, they signed up for a regular level two. Um, at the time, they did complete the lesson, but there's a difference in the length of the class time, so they're requesting a refund as well, so I'll leave those both up to your decision.
Well, I think in these two cases, especially the medical, we refund the money, and the other refund, it was an overpayment. She paid for a higher or a, a higher grade lesson than what she needed. So, the first one's a medical.
I agree, that's where the common sense and compassion come in, I agree with you, Mr. Councilman.
Well, if the council wishes, yeah, we can do that. Thing we gotta remember, that pool loses an awful lot of money every year, we've never made money on the city's pool there. And we gotta be careful, if we're gonna start giving out a couple of refunds, we may have to redo the refund policy. Because we just, like I said, we lose thousands of dollars every year and we cannot afford to keep giving out a lot of refunds. It's, it's kinda hard on the city.
Some of this was our error.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think it should be taken care of.
I think we need to look at it.
Um, I.
We, it isn't that we're gonna extinguish this.
No.
No.
But we just gotta keep an eye, we may have to readjust the refund policy.
Could I say something? I think, um, my understanding is we lose between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a year on that pool. Um, lessons should, you know, if, if a class doesn't fill sufficiently to pay the instructor, it should be canceled. So when people sign up for a lesson, we're counting how many kids signed up and can we pay the teacher? If we refund money that whole class, we have to subsidize. We don't make enough money to pay the instructor and the administrative overhead to run the class. I think that the policy that the city has, they allow for, um, I'm not gonna explain it right, but you make some adjustment to try to get the child to have the lessons, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we do now currently.
So it's not like we just say you're out of luck. We say, can you do a different session, can you do one private lesson and finish this, you know, the, the class? And I think that, I'm in favor of having the pool for the children, I as a child benefited from that pool greatly, I remember when it was put in, that's how old I am. Um, so I, I think the no refund policy is good. With the understanding that we try to work with the parents so that those children can complete, can complete those classes in a different way. Now, the second thing that's before us tonight, did that child attend the preschool class or the level two class?
The child attended the preschool class.
Okay.
They transferred them over.
Yeah, they, they signed up for the level two by mistake, which is an older class, and then that's twice the length. They came to the pool and actually did the preschool class, they shuffled and got them into the preschool class.
What's the difference?
Uh, it's double, so forty bucks would be the, would be the refund, 'cause it's like forty and eighty.
Okay, so to me, that is an error, that's fine, but as far as the refund when you can't attend the class, I think the policy that we have is fair. And I do think once in a while, somebody's gonna be mad because they don't get a refund, but compared to not having that pool and not having my class, I think that is a good policy.
The only vision I'd like to see on that policy is just have it a week out from the start of lessons. Medical, if you're injured a week before, so seven days before if you're injured, get a refund. Four days before, that's, we couldn't fill the class and couldn't find a spot. That'd be a, I think, an easy solution.
If I could ask a question, if somebody gets a refund, then do you cancel the class 'cause there's not enough kids in the class?
I don't know, I'm not, I'm just, I'm, it's when you make a policy, you have to make a policy, I'm just giving you a suggestion how to, what it would be a compromise. So if you signed up a month ago, and all of a sudden you got a new job, your parents did, and they're moving out of town, if they're a week out, they could get their money back and not just lose it 'cause they're moving.
Well, I think there's, what, what's good for the individual, but what's good for that whole class, if you, I don't know what, what's full for a class?
It depends, we have, we have caps, you know, like some of them, you have to have at least three to run the class. Some of them you have to have more, it, it depends on what type of class it is. And those are Red Cross standards.
Okay.
And, you know, they're small.
Yeah.
That's why they, they cost, I mean, they're, they're small, so it's expensive to run by the time we pay the guard and the program fees.
But a week's time, is that long enough to refill that? If, if notified that they can't make.
It kinda depends, I mean, like, i- if it's towards the end of the year, it may not happen. Um, you know, the beginning of the year, some, we seem to have more that come earlier and, and fewer that later in the year, it just, you know, it varies from year to year. I think this year, we did pretty well, we had pretty full classes, but it depends each year.
But the other situation, didn't they try and get somebody to fill that spot?
There was a request too, but we didn't have that in policy, so the, the policy didn't allow for that.
Okay.
Hi, um, so you are correct, I requested to fill the position and I was denied that opportunity. And then the seventy-two hours, or none of them, like four days, 'cause I accidentally happened that Thursday night, um, then the swim lessons started up. Then the swimming lessons started that Monday. Well, now time's up, you know, so then they had to come all the way to council. And then, correct, after the council meeting, then, and you all should've received that email thread. Ms. Freddie did offer me a private lesson, but due to the extent of care, she's still restricted on swimming and I, doesn't, the pool usually fills like right before Labor Day, so they can go out to college and stuff. So either way, private session is not eligible for our family. She did offer to have my other daughter, Emma, have a private lesson, but it's just not, it, it can't work for our family. And that, that was the whole original request that if I don't get the refund, which I'm not going to by the sound of it, we need to review the policy and make exceptions for medical. Because in regards to your concern, I highly doubt all eight students are going to break their arms. I highly doubt that. So you really wouldn't have to cancel the class because it's just probably not going to happen. But, um, I, like, and then also in the email thread, you should've saw too, that I said to donate the lesson. If I'm not gonna get my money back, if I couldn't fill the spot, just donate it into a family in need. And I'm just going to assume that did not happen for session three. So again, another opportunity to do the right thing and that didn't happen. So I would really like to see a policy review because it's just, people are mad and rightfully so. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with your opinion. We have to make some changes to adapt accordingly.
I make the motion that we approve the two pool refund requests.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, I will, the motion with the stipulation that we review the refund policy this winter.
I'll second that.
Motion, well, we're gonna, okay, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I ask one question? Just because I anticipate there may be a few more of these coming forward, what would you like me to do on future requests for refunds?
For this year?
Yes, for this year.
Let's look at it by a case-by-case basis.
So they, they should come to you? Okay. Just 'cause I know I probably will get a few phone calls.
So what would be the other request that was an emergency?
Well, no, we had a request for a refund. I had two requests for refunds for people that moved. And we had a request and it actually came up again about the temperature of the pool. So I'm just wondering if those come forward again to me with this change or with this refund being issued, what, how you would like me to handle those. That's all I'm asking. And I can bring them to you. That's perfectly fine.
I think we look at them as.
Cause we don't have the policy changed, is what I'm.
Right now.
I don't think that the moving thing is an emergency type thing, but.
I don't either. And the, and the water temperature isn't, the, this was a medical.
Yeah.
And this was an overpayment.
Okay.
Those are totally different than having somebody move or having the water being too cold.
So I haven't had kids in swimming lessons. When do you sign up for swimming lessons?
In May.
And when do they start?
They start in June. You can sign up throughout the summer too, but they, they open in mid-May.
Okay.
Yep. And I will direct our pool manager, we always have a meeting, to come up with some suggestions on the policy. That is no problem at all. We would, that makes our job easier. We need to be very clear on a number of different situations. So we'll try to come up with what we might think might be a, you know, possible situation that we'd have to look at. So, okay, thank you.
At this time, we will be closing the meeting. While the council has a discussion on an agreement price, we ask that everyone leave. You can wait out in the hallway if you want until after we're done with the discussion and everything and then come back in. But there will be nothing more.